Good evening and welcome to the May 12th, 2025 Work Session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one discussion topic, and it's a good one. But before we get to that, we have an announcement, or two announcements, actually. We're going to go to Jamil for the first one.
Good evening, everybody. 2025 election announcement. Gaithersburg residents will cast their ballots for mayor and two council members on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Candidate packets were released on Thursday, May 8th, 2025. Packages can be picked up at City Hall by appointment only, or requested electronically by contacting City Clerk Leah Jones at cylelections@gaitersburgmd.gov. The candidate filing deadline is Thursday, August 21st, 2025, at 5:00 PM. Mandatory candidate training sessions will be held in person on Thursday, May 29th, virtually on Tuesday, August 5th. Candidates must attend one of the two sessions. Registration is required. To register for training session, contact the city clerk at 240-805-1084. For complete election information, please visit www.gaitersburgmd.gov/elections.
Thank you very much, Jamil. And the only other thing I will talk about is something coming up on Saturday, the Gaithersburg Book Festival. 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Borre Park. We're going to feature about 140 featured authors, who will have speaking parts on our stages, book signings, book sales, writing workshops, lots and lots of children's activities. But this is an all ages festival. Some of the highlights, Rick Atkinson, Pulitzer Prize winning historian, Dave Barry, Pulitzer Prize winning humorist, Janine Cummins, bestselling author Jeffrey Dever, John Patrick Green, a huge children's author, Erin Ntrata-Kelly, who just won the second or second Newberry Medal, the Dork Diaries series. Creators are going to be there, and sci-fi writer John Sculsey, and lots and lots of others. It's going to be an amazing event, amazing event. And you can find out all the details at gaithersburgbookfestival.org. Please join us. It is free to attend, free to park, and fun for all ages. Okay, so let's get to our topic. We're going to talk about the Multi-Generational Recreational Facility Feasibility Study. And here to lead us in that conversation is Danny Wilson, Barry Dunn, consultants, and we have Carolyn Muller, Director of Parks, Recreation, Culture, and I will turn it over to you guys.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Thanks so much for having me. I want to make sure you can hear me. I'm sitting close enough.
We're good.
We are going to chat tonight. First, what we're hoping to do is share a presentation of what the results of that feasibility study were. And following that presentation, we are open to questions, and hopefully lots of answers for those questions that we've heard. There might be several of. So without further ado, Barry Dunn, the consulting firm, was secured to conduct the Multi-Generational Recreational Feasibility Study. And, you know, we want to pause for a second to just ask, you know, answer the question of, what does that mean? Well, first, we wanted to identify, is there a need in the community for this particular space? And if so, then what does that mean? And then, what will it cost? And will it work? Bottom line, will it work? So that's what we set out to do with the help of staff. And so what we wanted to share today was a description of the project itself. We wanted to talk with you about the engagement that we had internally with staff, as well as with the community members. Share what we've learned. Talk about what criteria went into site selection. Then go into that feasibility, the dollars and cents piece, and then the conclusion, and opportunity for questions and answers. So as far as the project itself and what the task was, we were to conduct a feasibility study for a new multi-generational recreational facility that had four key components, that it met community needs, emphasizes improving existing senior center programs, that engages community and staff members, and then determines gaps in programming, identifies service needs, and understands the market. So the study will provide a basis for the facility demand, the building program, and the site characteristics. So it was a task that Barry Dunn had, and we said, okay, we'll do this in five phases. We'll have a discovery session, phase of the project. We will then conduct engagement, do some analysis, then talk about visioning a little bit with staff, and then finally, a draft and final report. So that's the approach that we took to the project. We started by talking, and talking with staff and community members. From a community engagement perspective, there were two stakeholder meetings, three focus groups, a public meeting, a project website that was available 24/7. And in the end of all of that, we had what we call contributions. And the total number of contributions was 634. So that total is not just the number of folks that participated, but also, for example, on the project website, if they gave us several ideas, we counted those as contributions. So speaking of that website, we had a special site all only focused on the project itself, all to itself. And so on the left side of the screen, that's what the site looked like. Hopefully, y'all were able to visit it and see that we had a quick poll or survey question area. Then there was an area that we called an Ideas Board, and it was like virtual post-it notes where folks could share their idea, and then others could join in and give a thumbs up or a thumbs down about the idea. We had some questions about indoor spaces, and we also wanted to know if there were any barriers to participation with the current facility inventory that you had. We also used this site to offer opportunities like the Public Open House back at the end of August, and also focus group opportunities on August 29th. If you notice, in the upper right-hand corner area, there was an opportunity to change the language of this site. So depending on what language someone preferred, they could choose to see this site in a different one. The right-hand side gives you a quick summary. As far as, did anyone go to the site and provide any information or feedback? We did have 930 page views, total of 707 visits, which is a little different than the page views. The visits would just be the total opportunities into the site, and then if they poked around a little bit. And then the different areas had varying levels of participation. But the quick poll had the number-one level of participation out of anyone who visited the website. We also talked to the staff, the city leadership, department and division chiefs, the programming staff. And then we went on a tour. We got to see a lot of the different spaces that you already have facilities on, and we were able to visit two additional open pieces of land that were potential opportunities for development of a facility in the future. Again, this is today a high-level summary of what we learned. There is the whole supporting report document that details out all of what we learned. But from a highlight perspective, we did want to understand first, who are you serving? So to understand the city's demographics a little bit, we broke some things down and understood that about half of your population would qualify in that general adult population. But flanking either side, there's about a quarter of your population that qualify in that youth category, and then about a quarter that we like to say active adult, and not necessarily senior. That we tend to use that throughout the industry when we're working with folks that are over 55 years of age. In the future, the prediction is that your young adult population will go down slightly. Your senior population will go up slightly. Not by a ton, but there is a little bit of shift, a little bit of age in place. I will say, from our demographic projection work that we do all across the country, the folks that do that prediction work are struggling a little bit because there's a, the birth rate is changing very dramatically differently than it has in quite some time, that our young folks aren't having as many babies. So they're doing their best trying to make these predictions. We don't have a crystal ball, but we do see that your senior population is likely to grow in the near future. And the projections you see on the bottom right-hand side are for the next five years or so. And like the rest of the nation and world, there is a growing racial and ethnic diversity shift predicted in the community. Besides looking at who's living here, we also like to look at trends that are happening in the industry of parks and recreation, and how people like to spend their leisure time. And so what we found is that about 33% of your residents like to walk for exercise. This is very typical. It's something that a lot of folks can relate to. Another trend is pickleball is growing, by the way. If you haven't heard about that sport, it's been trending for several years now and continues to be the fastest-growing sport in the nation. Working out is the top aspiration across age groups nationwide. Doesn't mean that everyone's working out, but
We all mean to.
aspire to work out. But yes, we all could use a little bit more of that workout opportunity. And then finally, about 35%, when they're asked nationwide, they would like to see investments in indoor recreational facilities. These are, some of these statistics are nationwide, but like that top one, 33% or so of your residents, that is specific to your city boundary. I should actually point out, the image on the left, we also want to highlight, walking for exercise, while it was the top trending activity, weightlifting, swimming, jogging or running, and yoga, those are all additional indoor activities that are trending upward over time. We also like to look at the market for you, and there are a couple of different, different market points that we tend to look at. One of the things we wanted to highlight in today's presentation is that there is an estimated 1,200 or so households in the city based on some calculations what we're seeing nationwide that could be multi-generational. Now, we don't have that question asked specifically out on, say, the US Census data. However, based on some projections, what we were able to find is that many of the residents in town and the city may already be living in a situation that is multi-generational. Could be very comfortable for that many households already to experience multi-generational activities together with family members and with folks that are of different generations in town. There's another source that we use that helps us understand the market potential for different leisure activities. And they offer different feedback and results on active activities and passive. While the whole, all the results can be found in the report, we do want to call out the top three in both the active and the passive categories. Hiking, weightlifting, and walking for exercise have the highest market potential in your community. And from a passive perspective, indoor gardening and plant care, reading a book, and playing board games, those things are also something that have high market potential. And really, what that means is not that people are going to spend a ton of money, that you're likely to see the most participation from a leisure perspective in these activities in your community. This is based on actual data, again, from your city's boundaries.
Is there a technical difference between hiking and walking for exercise?
Yes. Hiking is going to be going off into the woods. You're probably doing a little incline up mountains, down the mountains, that sort of thing. Walking for exercise can be around your block. It can be around an indoor track. It could
So hiking is like a more intensive, but sometimes off, like sidewalk.
I would correlate hiking with nature. That would, that would be my line for you to help differentiate between the two.
Mr. Mayor, I'm both.
I pass you every morning.
Yeah, I'm both.
Nice, nice.
Do you have a walking stick?
He's a walking dog.
All right, all right, go ahead.
All right. So one of the other things we tend to do in this process is look at what is currently being offered from a program and service perspective. And so what we want to understand is, well, what are the opportunities currently being offered to the community? And again, you'll see more data in the report, but we wanted to highlight that the two areas that are, that have the most offerings, two facilities, I should say, are the Gaithersburg Aquatic Center and Benjamin Gaither Center. Those have the most offerings. So that means the total number of classes, if you will. Now, we don't want to look at any one of these particular assessment pieces in a vacuum. We have to look at all of them kind of together and understand what the story is that's being told. So we also look at are things like drop-in participation on the right-hand side of the screen. And so you'll, you'll also see Old Town Youth Center, 22,000 visits drop in. That tells a story as well. So even though on the left-hand side, it says, oh, well, staff had 31 programs, that seems kind of low in comparison to swim lessons. It's a different service altogether than what we're offering that demographic. So again, we want to look at these things in tandem. So we have a full understanding of what the recreation opportunities are throughout all of what you're offering at all of the different locations. So it doesn't necessarily mean that a low number equates to a bad number in this particular context. Then what we look at is who's participating. We look at those drop-in visits. We then look at things like, well, how many folks in the different types of activities that are being offered? So on the left-hand side, you'll see the total enrollment by program category. Again, this is only those programs that the city tracks registration for. It doesn't mean, for example, that we know exactly how many people are coming to the book event this Saturday, for example. But this does help us understand that sports has the highest level of participation with all of what is offered in the city, followed by your active adult programming, and then aquatics, fitness and health, and after-school programs. Those have the highest number of people that are, you're currently reaching through registration-based programming. On the right-hand side of the screen, what you see is the total wait lists by category. Waitlist means that someone wants to register into a class. There's no room for them at the time of their expressed interest in that class for a variety of reasons. And you'll see that aquatics, sports, and after-school programs, especially aquatics, had the highest total number of waitlist registrants. So what that means is there is a demand for that activity that there is not supply for. And the really, the thing that is most important here is when we combine these two things, that is your total need. People are telling you, and it's a known number. The unknown is how many people didn't put their name on the waitlist. They also might have been interested in these activities, but this is certainly known information. The people who have paid to participate or signed up to participate on the left, and the people who have said, yeah, I want in, and they weren't able to get in. The importance of that is expressed on the next slide, where we are able to identify unmet need. So when we take that total and compare, okay, we offered this many programs, this many people wanted to participate, though. For example, aquatics had a 28.7% unmet need. That was the highest, yes.
Can you go back one slide?
Sure, certainly.
On the waitlist registrants by category, do you have that broken down by resident and non-resident?
We don't have that information.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I don't know, the city staff may be able to get that for you.
I don't believe we track it. I definitely ask that question throughout the process.
Yes, thank you for the reminder. I knew there was something with residency that we were trying to track down more data, and we weren't able to pull it. Was this the, was this the one?
Yeah. And participating in this feasibility study has definitely opened our eyes to some of the ways that we are tracking our information in active, and some of the categories and things like that. So we have learned a lot from this as well, and how we're, how we're using our registration system.
And that is actually very typical. Whenever we come in and start poking around, and it's like, oh, wow, we didn't know that. And well, we'll point one out. One of the categories on here says no category. Well, that's because we, we're all human, and in entering information into the system, those few things didn't have a category assigned, and so there was one called no category. It's okay. It happens all across the nation, believe me. Does that help? Answer your question? Oh, well, it doesn't give you the data, but we try.
Can I collect it in the future when we do the registration and waitlist?
Certainly, yeah. All right. So as far as unmet need is concerned, your highest program areas that have an unmet need are aquatics, cooking, and after-school. Those are the top areas where folks have said, yeah, sign me up, but there wasn't enough space for those folks. Now, I mean, on a positive note, we also want to share that there's areas like your lessons and music and concerts where your, your residents' needs are 100% met. Those are things to celebrate as well as a part of this process. So when we start to summarize the key points, when we talk about the services, some of the things we wanted to highlight was that the senior participants, and from those that we spoke with, would like a space of their own, and they don't want to be inhibited by continuous facility constraints that happen at the Benjamin Gaither Center. Aquatics, we understand, is really constrained by a small aging facility and the use restrictions around the fact that the city's staff don't have full access to that space. And the other thing about aquatics is there are high enrollment numbers and high waitlist totals. That means there's a high demand on that space consistently. There is not enough space for the after-school youth programming to expand really beyond what's being offered right now. Indoor sports could certainly expand, but again, indoor space is a little bit of a barrier here. And indoor special events. While, again, book, the book fair? No, festival, festival, I'm so sorry. The book festival is wonderful and outside. We don't get that weather here all the time 12 months out of the year. So indoor special events are important as well. And from a category perspective, there are some opportunities to grow the preschool programming, gymnastics, aquatics, and active aging, walking, and jogging program areas. When we pull out the key points that we gleaned online, the one thing that I like about the opportunity we give folks to comment online is that they can do it, they can offer their feedback in a time and a space that works for them on their schedule. So if they can't make it across town by 7:00 to get to the open house on a Tuesday when they're supposed to be on the other side of town at a soccer practice taking pictures, I learned we have, we have a photo, a parent over here that was at soccer all weekend and taking photos outside. So it, that can be tricky for folks to get to an actual open house. But when we offer it online, when it's convenient to them at 5:00 in the morning with morning coffee, 10:00 o'clock at night, but while they're winding down, they can share things like that they have a desire for multi-generational spaces that integrate programs for seniors, youth, and families in a single facility, promoting intergenerational interaction. The online feedback folks also said, yeah, we need some more modern, versatile spaces that can be used year-round. 96 or 82% of the survey respondents said, yes, the community has a need for a multi-generational facility when they were asked that very question, is there a need for this facility? And the space types with the highest unmet need, and now 22 folks said these answers, but a sensory room, indoor aquatic park, and warm water therapy pool. Note that those top three areas, two of which were aquatic-based. And also note, yes, this is, this is not a statistically valid survey necessarily. But we like to pay attention to these little nuggets, that things like a sensory room, although it might not be the largest percentage of your community members, there are people in your community that need different spaces than maybe what you're able to offer right now. And a sensory room is one of those different spaces that would meet the needs of a community that has very special needs. Yeah.
What's a sensory room?
That's a really great question. Thank you so much for asking that. So a sensory room is a space that is safe for, for participants who have some special need of any kind. If they need a quiet space, if they need a space where they can move freely, they might have balls that have special textures. So think folks that have a diagnosis of autism, for example. They sometimes need a quiet space, or they need to be able to just run around uninhibited, but it's safe and enclosed. Often, there will be soft flooring, soft walls. So folks that maybe just need a separate space that's just for them with equipment specially for them, with different textures and different equipment, that space is solely for their use and their comfort.
So not like a meditation room?
Not a meditation room, no.
Glad you asked that question, because I thought of it as a meditation room, too.
I was thinking of like a mayor sitting there with a gong.
A sound bath, yeah. Close second, maybe. Great question. Thank you for asking. Sometimes I get into the jargon of our industry, and I forget to step back for a second. Other questions?
All good.
Okay, all right. So the desired outcome, that's what we needed to get to. So all right, we've heard all of these things. We've heard from staff, we've heard the community. So the desired outcome would be a space where the needs of multiple generations are met together under one roof, gymnasium, nadatorium, age-centric spaces. So spaces that are specific for seniors and specific for youth were desired, and shared multipurpose rooms. Those things all rose to the top as far as spaces that could help meet the needs to reach that desired outcome. But the most important piece here is in the green box, that individually, those space components, if you were to add those into existing facilities, don't accomplish that overall desired outcome that we heard from the community, that all generations could use these spaces either separately or in tandem, depending on the time of day, day of week. All right. I'll pause there really quickly before we go any further to site selection and the numbers, yeah.
I have a question, Danny. On the slide before, where you said current facilities won't allow, if we take a youth center, to plop in senior programming, because, because what?
Because there is a need for all of these things that we've identified. There is a need for indoor gymnasium space. There is a need for aquatic space, and space to be able to have both age, end of the age spectrum, to have their own spaces and together. If you take and put a gym over here and a couple extra rooms over here for senior programming, that doesn't accomplish that desired outcome of having everyone recreating in the same space. What you're also able to do with that, for, let's pick the gymnasium, for example, is now you can have folks that are walking on the raised, not the gymnastics track, the indoor walking jogging track, have folks walking during the day while kids are in school, and they can shoot some basketballs on one end of the court and pickleball on the other end. You're likely to attract folks that are over 55 years old and perhaps retired during the day, during the week, when the kids aren't able to really use that space anyway. Then you're able to, from a capacity perspective, and actually actively use your facility that you build at night and on the weekends, now the youth are available. They want to play basketball, they want to play volleyball. So if you take and move those spaces individually throughout the community, you don't get that same outcome of being able to serve multiple generations with one building.
Because of size, structure?
The components within.
Don't exist.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't exist together. What we're saying is they will more successfully exist in the same space. You will be able to, from an economy of scale perspective, reach multiple generations with one facility if everything is together.
I, I think I'm asking my question wrong. If we were to take Robertson Park, for example, the youth center, and build, well, I guess that's part of the study, and add senior programming to it, that would work?
To what, to what desired outcome?
For multi-generational.
For senior, adding seniors into an existing space
Right.
moves your senior programming. It does not accomplish the desired outcome of offering more aquatic programming for all generations.
Okay.
It does not accomplish having spaces that both generations can use at different times of the day or concurrently, intergenerationally even.
Okay, so it's the whole ball of wax. Got it? Okay, thanks.
Can I, can I jump in on that? I think what you're saying, though, assumes an all-or-nothing approach versus, you know, possibly solving for maybe 75% or even 50%. And honestly, it kind of dabbles a little bit into a policy decision. And honestly, it kind of dabbles a little bit into a policy decision perspective. Because, you know, we kind of set off down this path because we know that our senior center is inadequate currently and we're looking for opportunities to be able to combine. And I think what Councilmember Henderson was alluding to is that while, you know, expanding Robertson Park, for example, to the point where we're adding senior programming, maybe if they expand the building and we're offering youth programming, we're offering senior programming, maybe we're not doing aquatics, but maybe we decide as a council that because there's a giant aquatic center in Germantown, that that's not something we feel that we need to offer. So one of the things that disappointed me, while there's a ton of great data in here for sure, I feel like there was a decision made, kind of an all-or-nothing approach, whereas a success here might be something like Councilmember Henderson is suggesting, that maybe for 25% of the cost, we might have been able to assemble something that addresses many of the needs that were identified. And yes, maybe there's some other things that we might be able to do in the future. But those options aren't being given to us, so it leaves some additional questions.
Okay, so there's a lot there. I'm going to try to take a couple of things at once. Yes. So the task was to understand, is there a need for a multi-generational facility? That was part one, and if so, then how will it work or will it work? And we identified, yes, there is a need. And when you consider what a multi-generational facility means, it means that there are multiple experiences for multiple generations to experience either together concurrently or separately. That, is there a need for that? Certainly. Does any one of your existing buildings fulfill that need? No, and I'm getting a little bit into the site selection piece here. But we had to determine what is the desired outcome here. And the desired outcome was still, yes, there's a demonstrated need for a multi-generational recreational facility. So I'm not sure what you meant by policy decision, but I will say that when we, from looking at recreation systems across the nation, when we see what is in the inventory and the opportunities presented, when we look at what's in your inventory, is there a need for you to figure out something to do with Benjamin Gaither Center? Certainly. And the Gaithersburg Aquatic Center? Certainly. And so from a fiscal prudence perspective, you've got a couple of buildings that need some attention in the near future and this is where you're trying to decide what's that going to be. What we would recommend is instead of having your separate satellites pull that together to meet the needs of multiple generations, that, yes, that makes sense to us based on what we know from the industry and what serves communities best.
Now, when you say that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just quick, maybe I read it a little differently in that there's certainly a need for multi-generational services. How they're delivered could be encompassed in one monolithic center, which is what an MGC would be, or it could be in a campus with several modules of buildings delivering that at like Bora Park or other places is one way to do it. So that's, I agree with Jim, like those are policy decisions that we could take where maybe we can deliver a module of a senior center today, in the future, expand that, in the future, add aquatics, so we can bite the elephant, you know, one, one piece at a time, as opposed to you have to do it all in one big chunk. So that modularity, I think, is something I think was missing from this program.
I think that's where I was going to go as well with respect to both the concept of modularity, but also whether or not the study put the rigor behind considering, you know, would a standalone senior center, if there's a need for senior services, a standalone senior center, if it's showing there's a deficiency in youth services, would we then fund a youth center and a senior center somewhere, not necessarily multi-generational? And you had mentioned what you see around the country. I would love to see data of what you're seeing around the country, perhaps comparables around here. What are folks doing? And then I was hoping for some demographic information showing like, you know, we have a higher cluster of seniors living in this area of the city. I would, I would love to see walkability to the center. And so, you know, is that a right place to cite it? So I guess we'll get into how you chose the sites to look at and have that discussion. But I'm fully on board with, I think it was Jim's comment that sparked Jamil's.
On Lisa's.
I'm sorry, Lisa's comment that sparked Jim's inquiry that.
I do, if I can comment, I think also.
I'm sorry, can I clarify one, because I think I started this train. I, I understand what your task was and to single-center, multi-generational programming within it. And you took a look at the needs in the city and, and this is what you, you came to, the conclusion you came to. My question was towards, do we do some? Can we do, what, with our current, what I can't tell from the study is with our current facilities, what can we bake out of it now? Do we have opportunities now with what we have to do some multi-generational things? Is there, can we phase this then?
So if, if I could.
You started your comments with, I understand that the task was to conduct a feasibility study for a multi-generational center. It was not to conduct a feasibility of what if you came back with all of these needs and then plopped them all over the city? That's not what we asked them to study, so that, that wouldn't be a part of the findings. And even the phasing, if you mean phasing of the building, so constructing a building in phases, that's a different conversation than.
Well, I bring up phasing because it's addressed in the document, right, in the study. It talks about potentially taking a phased approach. But it doesn't talk about it in detail, so I'm, from, this is what Lisa thinks of what the phasing is. So I'm not sure from the document, but this is my thoughts of what phasing meant.
So I will, I have a couple of things. So from phasing, let's start with what we just ended on. That is at the end of the document where we talk about looking into the future. If you should decide to build this building, that is certainly a way to construct facilities. But it would have the intent to come to some end that would include all of these services with it. That's something you would work through with the architect, but you would design the facility as a whole and then determine, let's say you can't afford to the whole facility, that you did part of it, you would determine that. That certainly calls for a cost-benefit analysis because if you do phase in and you build upon a building upon a building over time, you lose the economy of scale and sometimes you lose continuity in now you're adding a new building to an aged building to what have you. So, but that would not come at this stage of your decision-making. I will take it back just a step and I will share that nationwide, what we're seeing is that communities aren't building senior centers anymore. They're just, they're not. The reason they're not is that folks that are in the age of 55 to 65 and then 65 to 75, and even some 75 to 85-year-olds, don't want, they don't see themselves as what we are defined as senior. They're feeling, we're feeling younger and younger, we eat healthier, we are more active. So when I say we use active aging, it's because folks over 55 don't want to be called a senior and they don't want to go to a senior center. Now, I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting we rename this facility, slap a new name on it. What I'm saying is our shift in how we recreate is that we are not putting components only for certain demographics, only for certain ages in different parts of town. That's not how we're recreating as a, as a nation. So I bring that perspective to you. I don't have the data on how many new builds are this way or not. But I can tell you that the building of a standalone senior center, we, we don't hear about that very much anymore.
I think we've heard anecdotally during this process that Montgomery County is no longer building senior centers.
Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Howard County. I reached out to a network of directors throughout the country and the vast majority are moving away from single youth, single age-centric buildings and moving to multi-generational centers.
Just a definitional, to make sure I'm understanding it. When, when people are saying phasing here, do we mean one building over time or multiple, or modules? Like, like one big building or four smaller buildings that are done over time?
I wouldn't, I would say it has to do with how you construct one large building.
Okay.
I would not recommend that you put these, even if it's the same campus, that you put them separately because when you are done swimming your laps and now you want to go use the fitness equipment or you want to go hang out in the lounge and have coffee with your buddies that you just swam laps with, now you need to move across outside to a different part of campus. I wouldn't do separate standalone buildings on, in a campus setting, maybe we'll use that phrase. Wouldn't recommend that because folks want to move freely from space to space.
All right, let's, let's go forward to site selection.
Certainly, yes. So, site selection criteria. I will share that CHA, the architectural firm that partnered with us on this process, helped determine what these five primary factors really should be, both with the discussion of staff and their architectural expertise. And one is parcel size. There would be a minimum of 7.25 acres. The zoning that the community center is a permitted use on the property. They wanted to make sure we're looking at environmental considerations, or constraints, rather, that there are not wetlands or sensitive areas that would not maybe allow development. The access to the site, you know, to what extent is the existing roadwork and road network available? And would there be extensive improvements needed to be able to get to any particular site? And then utilities, similar thought process, are there utilities within close reach? And because when they're not, it can get quite pricey. So using these selection criteria, and again, we toured the facilities, they did a lot of review with staff and also the different mapping and understood that really the green section on the left, those buildings, Casey Community Center, Benjamin Gaither Center, Old Town Youth Center, City Hall, and the Spectrum property that doesn't have anything built on it right now, there isn't enough space, there isn't that 7.25 acres to be able to put a facility in that space that would meet multi-generational needs.
Funny question. So on the report itself, I think it was page 72 or, either 72 or 79, where it talks about the site selection, there's a graph, a paragraph on like, well, we looked at Bora Park, but there's too many stuff there, so we don't want to add anything. And so I view that as a feature, not a bug. So I think there may be different opinions on, it may be more advantageous to put there. So it's kind of disappointing that it wasn't included as part of the evaluation site. I'm sure clever architects could have figured out a way to at least give us optionality on sort of fitting it into this huge campus we have in the center of the city with parking available. So like a lot of that 7.25 acreage has assumptions on parking that maybe you could reduce because you have some on-site parking already and other, you know, you have staffing there and all that. So that was a weird, you know, omission from it.
So the activity center offers a lot, in Bora Park, offers a lot in that one location. What we would not recommend is that the city put all its leisure activities in one location in town, that it does attempt to have a little geographic equity in your larger recreational opportunities. So the activity center is really great, really well-established. You've got a lot of outdoor activities, a lot of outdoor green space that is used for a variety of activities. We recommend you leave that successful space alone and continue to capitalize on your opportunities throughout different parts of town. When we look at, when we do comprehensive planning from a parks system perspective, we look at things like geographic equity. If you put all of your recreational spaces in one location, everyone has to get to a single location. What we need to do is expand what you're offering off, out of the activity center to a whole other facility. The size might be similar to what, if you do a visualization of it, similar to what you see in the activity center. The components are going to be a little different, it's going to meet a little different need. We wouldn't recommend that you continue to build out on one central campus. It becomes less accessible to your community members. Community member, the nationwide, the standard, if you will, from the National Park and Recreation Association is parks should be within a 10-minute walk and facilities, the, the, with 10-minute walk, thumbs up.
We're in a half-mile.
Yes.
But we do much better than that, right?
Yes, so, you're paying attention, thank you so much. 10-minute walk and 10-minute drive time. Anything over a 10-minute drive time, people don't want to do it. They're less likely to go to a fitness center, for example, if they have to drive across town. So when we look at those factors, that's why, from our opinion, that, that space already, during the busy, busy times, you book festival, et cetera, you've got a lot going on in that single location already, indoors and out. To add more to it is going to cause more congestion and less access.
So Dani, if I may, that's where I guess we get into policy decisions and that's something that maybe this body should be deciding because that is a very centrally located space. And actually, one of the options that is being presented is at the far western border of our city, which is actually much less accessible for a good chunk of where a lot of our seniors actually live in the city. So to Councilmember Henderson, or Vice President Henderson's point. Hernandez, I'll get there eventually. It's only been four years.
Just call Mr. H.
But that's where, you know, at least being able to see what that could have looked like and then to be able to make that decision up here and say, you know what, we do want to spread it out. At this point, we don't have that data. And in this, talk about feasibility, you know, you could do this, but we recommend X versus making that decision for us. And I guess that's where I was disappointed. You know, that is a place where we have a lot of existing services for sure. But if it's, you know, construct something that's 40 million, $45 million, or maybe it's a quarter of the cost by augmenting something that is very successful, you're very correct in that. You know, if, that's why I come back to what I said earlier, that all or nothing. And I don't know if this body is going to be able to dedicate the resources that we'd need to that. And we're left with, we don't have those other answers. Does that make sense?
It does.
I do want to, on, on behalf of Barry Dunn, I do want to go back to the fact that they did take into consideration staff input. And we talked a lot about the constraints that we currently have at that location. So if we were to have, say, an aquatic center, you know, other things there, you know, it's just going to become even more congested. If you came to the Active Aging Expo, I mean, that was, you know, 500 seniors from around the area that were coming and the parking lot was full. If you come this weekend, the parking lot is overfull, so obviously we have to have shuttle buses that come in. So other facilities, other amenities there, the, you know, miniature golf will be closed this weekend because we don't have enough parking. The skate park will be closed, we don't have enough parking. So, you know, when we start to look at when we have large-scale events, you know, we would now also be looking at, you know, where are we going to have people park? So that, that would be a concern as well. And then when we look even just at the property there and what would be available, you know, potentially taking away some of the facilities that we currently have there would have to be a consideration because there just would not be, you know, we're not going to put it in the middle of a pond, right? So, you know, when you look at the, at Bora Park and what is there geographically and we have several historic buildings that are, you know, being considered for the National Historic Registry and things like that. So, you know, just thinking about where, where would you put them on that property?
So those are all very valid concerns. I guess when approaching something like this, I don't see those as obstacles more than challenges that would need to be addressed through the process.
So Jim, if I could, at any point today, two weeks from now, two years from now, the council says, we, we've got a feasibility on what a one building looks like. We'd like to do more learning and understanding about these other options. That's certainly doable. That just wasn't our task. So I appreciate your disappointment and, and your comments, and I want to be respectful of them. I just want to be sure that we understand what their charge was. So I, I wasn't disappointed by the deliverable because they delivered what we asked. And it's not a policy decision, that's certainly still up for discussion, right?
So, yeah.
So, yeah.
Feasibilities are done all the time for all sorts of things. And even when something's deemed feasible from a programming standpoint or from a neat perspective, doesn't mean the cash is there, doesn't mean the timeline's there, doesn't mean the capacity is there. I mean, there are all sorts of other things, right, that we've not explored. But this is sort of a very initial step. And if the, if you, go ahead.
That being said, I want to go through the presentation.
Sure.
And then I wa, I think we can figure out where we need to go from there afterwards.
Thank you.
I think we're going to get there. Thank you, Danny, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate the conversation throughout. It helps make a more interesting time. You know, that I'm just not up here doing.
Well, if it, seriously, if anybody has any specific questions about the slide that's in front of us, by all means, ask it. But we're, we are going to get to these questions about what now afterwards.
Okay. So from a feasibility perspective, we wanted to make sure we understood what what needed to go into the building to meet the needs. So from a, and here's where it gets tricky between recreation professionals' use of the word program and architectural use of the word program. From an architectural program perspective, meaning what types of spaces are going to be inside of the shell of the building? So what goes in it? It needs to meet multiple generations' needs, help serve the identified unmet needs, has a high market potential, and it has a potential to flex the function in the future. And we bring that up for things like pickleball. You know, we need to make sure we have gymnasium space. You can adjust the the new trend in sports, for example, or multipurpose space allows the staff to flex with whatever programming is trending and what the community wants in the future that we don't, we might not know exists yet. So what we've offered here is a quick summary of what we would offer as the core components, being a classroom, dedicated senior lounge area for socializing, reading, making it their own, and conversely, dedicated youth rooms to make the spaces their own. We understand that there are different interests depending on what generation you you are, but both express a need to have their own spaces. And yet, opportunities to come together with things like fitness and wellness center, group exercise studios, gymnasium, instructional kitchen, multipurpose rooms for programs, classes, meetings, and events. And staff talked about serving a hundred and fifty people. You know, we we want to make sure if we're going to do this, we don't have a lot of space to serve large groups of people successfully. A pool, sensory room, and walking jogging track that could be suspended above the gymnasium. And then certainly, we want to make sure we're remembering all the support components that would be needed. Things like a break room and restrooms and the lobby and offices. The architectural team makes sure that we have all of what's needed to help support the user experience in this building and the staff's ability to operate the building. And so the two sites that staff had given the architectural team, the go ahead, please plot this out, see if it even works. Can we do these types of program, architectural program spaces on these two sites? And what they identified is, well, yes, here are two ideas. This is the very preliminary stage of any architectural process where first we see, is it possible or feasible? So this first slide that we have does show you the Robertson Youth Center property, a potential way to connect what is there to something new. It doesn't have to connect in that way, but it lays it out visually. I'm a visual learner, so you can see it doesn't even work. And then similarly, on the Edison Park site, that conceptual layout, it does work. The one thing I do want to point out that the architectural team want to be very clear that the reason why the parking is where it is and the building is not oriented any differently is because of the under underground, what you cannot see. There are the water mains underneath there. So they would need to have access to get to the water sewer system underneath a parking lot. It's much easier than underneath a building. So we know there are a lot more details in this report, but we can tell you approximately forty two mil- million, forty three million to do either one of these locations. The site, there isn't a lot of difference between what we would need for the site. However, we did not in as a part of this study dig into things like the site work, soft costs, traffic analysis. That would happen next in the process. Similarly, there was a question about the phasing. That happens later in the development process. Certainly, there's more time for schematic designs where you get more community input on exactly what would go in the building and where and adjacencies and all of those things. This is the basic, what what's it going to cost us? So you can kind of make a, oh, my goodness, reaction or a, oh, we can make this happen reaction. We then did a pro forma. Pro forma helps us understand if we were to operate this facility, what would it take to operate? Very, very conservatively, we estimated the revenue at three hundred and eighty thousand dollars or so. Projected annual net revenue of what it would cost to operate the building with taking in all the expenses into account, about one point five, one point six million. Now that said, we certainly as we recommend that as you continue on with, you move, you say, yeah, let's continue to explore this. We want to get into conceptual design. And you refine things like size of fitness center, for example. There are different revenue points that might come in with a different pricing structure on some of your services. We used existing pricing structure for your existing services, your existing pay scale for the staff that you have right now. Yes, there was allocation. We we understood that some of your staff would move locations to this one. So there there was an accommodation for that as well. So these are preliminary numbers based on how you operate now. Whenever you do a big move like this, it does offer the staff an opportunity to reevaluate its business practices on what it is charging for services and what packages and and for for whom, et cetera. So that could change. All right, this is the end where we had said, are there any questions? Wait, 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 in conclusion, I forgot the conclusion. All right, so we would say that, yes, a multi-generational facility would fulfill those gaps that we identified and help reduce the barriers to your current senior and aquatic facilities. Final site selection, floor plan, operational choices, they will continue to evolve what that fiscal performance estimate would end up being. And to summarize, the pay as you go approach that your council likes to continue to follow, kudos to you, by the way. That budget approach will require the city to save about forty three million to build and allocate approximately one point six million annually to operate. And with that, that was the question slide. All right. What other questions can we answer for you?
Thank you, thank you. So here's what I'd I'd kind of like to do. Some very initial comments. And then we have, we have some folks here from Benjamin Gaither Center and our Senior Advisory Committee. I want to give people a chance to to testify. But but first, I want to say that I I think this feasibility study is actually very helpful. It it, I don't think it's, I suspect, based on the questions and conversations I've had with individual council members, I don't suspect that we're coming out of tonight with a direction. But it's gonna, it's gonna, it's it's a great conversation starter. It's put on the table some programmatic considerations that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do. It's given us a sense of what the potential is on at least these two site, potential sites. And I think it's the start of a real conversation about a topic that's important to us. So so I am, I am happy, I appreciate the work that you guys have done. And I think it's, it's taking us a good deal down a road that we want to go down.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Just make one suggestion. Why don't we let folks speak first?
Yeah, I'm getting to that. Yeah, that's going to happen right now.
Okay.
He just wanted to speak first.
Yeah, I wanted, yeah, let me set the table first. I wanted to speak first. So do we have anybody in the room who would like to testify on this topic? We'd love to hear your input on this. We've, we've received some of it in writing, but but we're glad to to hear it. If anybody wants to testify, just come up, state your name and address or neighborhood for the record. Keep your comments in the morning, three minutes and go right ahead. You know the rules.
We know the rules. So Jean Dinwiddie with the Senior Advisory Committee.
And Britta Monaco, also with the Senior Advisory Committee and proud Benjamin Gaither Center member.
Yes, so we have questions about the demographics. I was really shocked to hear you say that you only suspect a slight increase in the number of older adults. And you mentioned the birth rate in there is somehow connected. But I can tell you as a boomer that, you know, the aging population not connected to the birth rate.
So let's have all of your testimony and then we'll allow them to answer questions.
I think we don't have prepared necessary testimony. We had provided questions to Tanisha ahead of time, and I believe she shared them with some of you. I don't know if she shared them with you as well. But there were a lot of observations on the document itself. Part of it had to do with demographics. And in reading the report, it came through more clear on your presentation. But the report itself kind of segmented the adult population in groups that didn't necessarily strengthen the fifty five plus, which is the threshold for the Benjamin Gaither Center. So there was another segment in there that kind of, when it was not clumped together, did not make it look like we represent twenty five percent of the population in Gaithersburg, oh, fifty five plus. And I just think that that kind of minimized a little bit what that senior population is and the demand and that. So that, I think, was part of it. One of the other concerns I had is when you got into the granular budget for the actual facility projection, the price per square foot for some of the rooms that you were suggesting that would translate into senior activities was based on the existing square foot at the senior center, which has proven to be too small for what we need. So it seemed to me that the presumption of funding for those particular spaces was too low. You know, if you're only projecting what we already have and moving it to this larger center, we're already, we're already out of space. And then another question that I had that that was actually more specific to Charlene was does this accommodate all of the existing B G C staff? Or are there economies of scale that are going to reduce the staffing when you move to another center like that? Did you have anything else?
No, the twenty twenty eight.
Well, the twenty twenty eight timeline that showed in the report, yeah.
It's good to have a goal.
But I think we do, you know, you have heard from Senior Advisory Committee over the years about needing a new senior center and the challenges we have with the existing one. Fabulous programming, fabulous opportunities. I am so proud to have taken advantage of it upon my retirement from the city. So we do appreciate that you're looking into a new facility that has some beautiful amenities and lots of recreational opportunities for us.
And we recognize what you said, that most facilities are for the older adults during the day and are for the youth during the evening.
And we're happy to share.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Not to anybody, let me just check on Zoom. I see one hand up on Zoom. If anybody on Zoom wants to offer testimony, use the raise hand function and I'll call on you. Tech team, if you could bring up our old colleague, Mike Sesma, that would be great. Mike, you know all the rules, but I'm going to remind you. State your name and address for the record, because sometimes you don't do that. Go ahead, Mike.
Good evening, it's Mike Sesma, resident of Kentlands now. I want to thank the team for the presentation feasibility study. The last time I think I saw a feasibility study for a new senior center was in two thousand and six or two thousand and seven. Number of the same issues came up. Also, in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, that was the first two years in my first term, we explored, we had a significant feasibility study on Aquatic Center that was going to be at Edison Park, and that presented a number of challenges. But we had a lot of resistance, both from the senior community, who really felt that they deserved their own center. And, you know, so you're hearing some of that now. I think hopefully that's changed a little bit. The other challenge that we had with the Aquatic Center that was going to be at Edison Park was a change in the county's approach to providing support to the city for that facility, just as they had for our senior facility at that point. That was long before it was called the Gaither Center, Benjamin Gaither Center. And so based on that, the city manager, in concurrence with the council, decided that non-residents would have to pay a higher fee to become a member of those and a user of those facilities. And subsequently, the membership of the senior center went from a thousand to about four hundred after a number of non-residents, many who who were very active in the senior community, decided they they couldn't afford it anymore since the county stopped their subsidy. But I think the other problem with the Edison Park site was the encroachment on a Stream Valley buffer there that, you know, we had a beautiful building design. We'd already hired a coordinator away from the county, Bill Ballou, who's going to direct that. And then we heard the same complaints. Well, this is all the way on the other side of the city. How do you expect people who live in Old Town and Saybrook to be able to access and and you take advantage of the facility? It's not anywhere near us. So I'm hearing a lot of the same things that we discussed over the, over the sixteen years that I was on the council. I think it's worth hearing a feasibility study that focuses on a multi-generational center. I would say that when we had the feasibility study in two thousand and five, we did tour a number of facilities in in the state, Prince George's and Montgomery County. As a member of the National League of Cities, I also got to see multi-generational centers throughout in cities very similar size to Gaithersburg. And they were very successful and they, you know, I think it was a reach for some of those cities. But I think in the long run, the gamble was worth it. So I'm worried about some of the jitters I'm hearing from the council members here. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Tech team, if you could bring up Russell Kennedy, that'd be great. Russell, just unmute yourself, state your name and address or neighborhood and go right ahead. Russell, it looks like you're still on mute.
Got it.
Okay.
My comment on this has to do with.
Russell, Russell, hold on, hold on. We need you to state your name and address or neighborhood.
Oh, right, right, sorry. My name is Russell Kennedy. I live at eight Russell Avenue unit in Gaithersburg, Old Town. My biggest problem is transportation. I have no automobile. Public transportation is lousy in this city. It doesn't go, I can get to Silver Spring easier than I can get to a lot of other places in Gaithersburg by taking the bus system, the ride on bus, et cetera, et cetera. I I went to the senior workshop today at Boras Center. It took me forty minutes to an hour to get there. Those of you who've seen me, I have a walker, I walked the whole way. I was hot and sweaty when I got there. I wouldn't want to participate in any activities when I got there. I did it, I did my activity. So I, 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 I think the putting the things out on the fringes of the city would be useless to people like me. And I'm sure there are more people like me around.
Russell, we.
That's, that's, that's about it.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your testimony. Do we have anybody else on Zoom who'd like to testify? Just use the raise hand function. Going once, going twice, not seeing anybody, okay. All right, well then, now we will go to the council. And who'd like to go first? I will, I I want everyone to to say their piece to a certain degree, but then I want to wrap us up with some directional questions about next steps. I I've been, I've got four of them right now, but based on what you guys have, we might have others. We'll start with Rob.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I'll say that the the presentation and the report match the task, and and that's a compliment. My my concern is is with, is with the task itself and whether it answered the question that was was originally asked. And so I'll just say, here, here's what I would love to see. I would like to see more data on first half of the presentation on the the demographics, usability, needs, capacity, wonderful. I I think that gets my brain juices flowing in the direction that that I I want them to start flowing. Mentioned before, what I'd like to see more of is kind of the demographics and the 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 area needs. And so understanding what the, or I'm sorry, area capacity. So understanding what facilities are, as as Jim had mentioned, the Germantown Aquatic Center, other areas, other buildings and capabilities, capacity that is adjacent to the city. And and also. And, and also something that we've talked about in the past with respect to, for example, build out of park amenities is that the, the way the city developed over time is the, the, you know, 1800s, 1900s on this side of town and then planned communities on the other side of town in general. It causes a lot of consternation amongst our, our population of why don't we have all those parks that they have in the Kentlands? Because the Kentlands is a planned community. But the Kentlands also has amenities with it. My community has amenities with it. Other communities that have come in more recently have amenities with. And so my, my thought there would be those communities with amenities probably would not utilize city-generated amenities as much as those that have no amenities because their housing developments don't have a swimming pool. They don't have a recreation facility and things like that. And so that's the kind of data that I, I would, I would love to, to, you know, sink my teeth into so that we can look at where the needs are and build the capacity in, in conformance with those needs. I'll throw out there, I'm not really interested in greenfield development. So Robertson Park and Edison Park are probably not there for me in my book. I'm probably looking at the 7.5 acre criteria. I would not have put that there. I'd also probably take a step back as to whether it should be a multi-generational center at all. Not saying that's not where I would ultimately end up, but I would like to understand, as I mentioned before, you know, what are the options? What's working locally? What's working? As you've mentioned, you talk to your friends. I love to talk to your friends or have you convey to me what they would say. So that we can understand what the, the, the optionality is, what the needs are, what the capacity is, so that we can make a, a informed path forward on this. And so I just, again, great presentation, great report. I probably would have stopped at the start, the site selection and all of that. Everything before that immensely useful and kind of where we want to go with this or where I think we want to go with this.
All right. Thanks. We'll go to Neil.
All right. So I read through the report and then I read through the presentation. And the biggest heartburn I had was the price tag. I think the feasibility ends at 40 plus million dollars. We, the county built a three-story elementary school for 38 million. So it seemed like a really big number. I was surprised that the project included an aquatic center. I understand that, that there's a need because the current aquatic, aquatic center is not feasible to continue. But I think bundling them together, it turned out to be a big, a big surprise from a price point of view. I also wonder, and I, I really don't have any good data on this, whether the private sector would step in to provide a swimming facility if there wasn't already a public indoor facility in the area. I know in my neighborhood, a private business opened up in a retail store, the Goldfish Academy, where they're teaching toddlers how to swim. I was shocked that they did it and it's, it's busy all the time. It's very adorable, as a matter of fact. So I'd love to, all the discussions previously about a, a multi-generational center focused on all the activities except for the swimming part. And I understand swimming is popular and people like it and I like it too. But in discussions with our predecessors about the, about what Mike talked about, the original aquatic center idea over at Edison Park, the price tag was, and the operating cost was really the, the part that killed it. So going forward, I'd love to see if we could unbundle this and if it comes down to a price that we can afford. I have the same, same concerns about location. In terms of Borah Park, I understand staff's concerns. But in terms of geography, it's, I mean, it, it's hard to imagine any part of the city that's not a 10-minute drive from Borah Park. It's right smack in the middle and the city's not all that big. Takes me 10 minutes to get there and I'm at one corner of the city. Yeah, I think that's all the comments. I mean, I concur with everything else I've heard. I think there was some sticker shock involved at the beginning that's caused some consternation here. So maybe one of the, one of the, one of the tenants at the beginning of this project was a lower price tag to begin with. But I understand that that's not what the process, how the process worked. So I think that's it for now.
All right. We'll go to Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm going to beat a couple of dead horses here.
Where's animal control?
Thank you for the presentation. And it, the answer, question is answered about feasibility. So the, the objective of the study. So thank you. I, I'm not surprised that that was the answer. I'm a fan of it being a single building with, with multi-use programming for all ages, all, all, all the demographics that you put out. The price tag is unnerving, which is why I, you know, maybe in the, not maybe, but hope, in the next phase, if we go there, to talk about phasing. Because what can we do to, to, to bring those costs down? And even not just the upfront building costs, but even the operational costs are, are very high. Are the private partner, public-private partnerships that we can do, what, what's, what are our choices there? So I think that's some of the next phasing piece. The aquatic center, also, I also was surprised to see it end. You explained why it's in there. That's, I didn't realize that the demand, I, I know how popular it is, but to see those numbers, to see what the wait lists are, that's incredible. So there's the need. How do we handle it? Because it, I'm going to assume that aquatic center is a great part of this cost. On the numbers, yes. But even when we get in, in to designs and everything else, it's going to be a big part of the cost. So how do we, you know, handle that separately, more effectively from a cost standpoint? But thank you. And I am a fan of a, of a single, single-use facility, a single building. And I was tasked to ask the questions of the SAC, but you guys, you did, you did it. Thanks.
All right. We'll go to Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, thank you for all the data. Obviously, a ton of work went into this. And please don't see my line of questioning as devaluing any of the work that went in here. Because as the mayor said, there is so much great information here that will inform future programs and, and, you know, figuring out where we want to allocate our resources. I agree with my colleagues. I think decoupling the, the swimming pool from the overall cost, I think being able to see what that looks like might help us back away from some of the sticker shock. And I'll, I'll admit, when we started on this path, when I came at this thinking intergenerational, combining youth and senior, in my head, it was not a second activity center at Borah Park at that level. So that, I think, informs some of the sticker shock that I had, trying to be everything to everyone. Which, you know, you have set like, okay, here's what all of that looks like. And I think now the task becomes whittling that down into what can we do? What is feasible? And which of that laundry list that you've identified is going to be that priority? And I think that's where the, the work needs to continue. I think some of that data that we've asked about, I think, is, is a great idea. Unfortunately, we won't have the understanding of what that waitlist is as far as resident versus non-resident for the swimming.
For the summer.
But yeah, for the summer, see how that, that updates. But, because that would be interesting because there are other offerings. And, you know, we've even seen that with the hearings that we've had with the Lake Forest property and, you know, seeing that need from, from Montgomery Village for, you know, additional soccer fields nearby. That wasn't necessarily something the city was going to be able to provide in, in the space that we might have had available. But it just recognizes that there, there is need out there for lots of different things. And I think we, as a, as a council, as staff, as a city, need to figure out, you know, what are those core services going to be identifying, you know, what we want to do now? And then, you know, coming back to, you know, how do we make as many folks be able to, to reach that? I think Mr. Kennedy brought up a good point about transportation, making sure that whatever we decide is going to be accessible, identifying where our senior population currently is and might in the future be, and then making sure that they would be able to access that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. We'll go to Jamil.
One of the great things about batting cleanup is you get to say yes. Agree with my colleagues, very articulately said, you know, when, when I first came tonight, I, I was going to focus a lot of my comments on some process concerns I had with it. And as I think about it tonight and as I go through it, I think it depends on what your expectations were on reading this. And so you heard Jim, Castleman McMillty, talk about, he had this set of expectations. When I read it, I wasn't here when the RFP was drafted or the original query came in. So I'm coming in after the fact. And so from my perspective, I would have thought, you know, if somebody's going to, something's going to be $41 million, maybe check in with council midpoint, you know, before dropping the report. But maybe this is the midpoint, you know, in terms of, of doing the check-in. So it depends on that lens you're using to evaluate it. Ultimately, the decoupling or modularity, getting more, I think, better optionality and cost. I have a million, I'll send them in writing, kind of cost issues, some nits, some bigger ones. Like we use CPI for cost estimates, which doesn't make sense to me because CPI is like a consumer and has food and apparel. It should be PPI or other, you know, indices which have longer tail effects. So there's like nits like that. Comparables, important. Also, there's maybe some sites that we can suggest that staff may not have been aware of that could be potential. They're not city-owned today, but maybe on the availability of it or the potential plausibility list. Castleman Daru talked about the comparables with the, like, what did it cost to build the Germantown Aquatic Center? They just rehabbed the Rockville Center. So we have recent, fresh, in our market, real cost data of what these things cost as opposed to just sort of granular or estimates. And then are, are we going to try to work with the county or not? So I think that's still a policy piece where there may be some sites that are adjacent to county folks that maybe or may not. So I would put that in the collaborations bucket with pub, you know, public-private partnerships or our fellow colleagues in the county. But I agree with the rest.
Okay. A lot on the table. I, I, I'm trying to boil it down into several pieces because I, I feel like this feasibility study has gotten us. To Jamil's point, I don't even think we're at the midpoint. I think we're, we're sort of at the end of the beginning, as that, that phrase goes. And I think some of the questions that I'm hearing from the council are, should we look at an option that would include decoupling an aquatic center from this facility? Or several options that way? Do we want to reconsider Borah Park as a potential site? I'm hearing, I'm hearing that question. Are there other locations in addition to Borah Park that, that? And, and if we were to decouple the aquatic center from this project, then how many, how much acreage do we need? Maybe that changes the eligible properties. The, are there other program? Now, I don't, this hasn't really come up with, with the council, other than the, the aquatic center idea. But are there other programmatic configurations you'd like to evaluate? Do we think we're, we're generally, other than the question of whether or not to couple it with an aquatic center, are we generally good with what's been identified in this feasibility study? Frankly, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with what's been identified, but I'm, I'm interested in council and staff, what they have to say. And then I hear price tag. Everybody looked at that and said, wow. So are there strategies that could, that we could look at that could soften that below? That includes potential of public-private partnerships. It includes not including, you know, getting, decoupling with the aquatic center, which I think would probably substantially reduce price.
Can you, can I just ask for clarification on what we define as decoupling?
If we were just to say, let's, let's do a, a multi-generational center that does not include.
Removing it?
Yeah, removing it. Yes, removing it. And are there, would there be other, be other ways we could sort of, I hate the term value engineer, but, because we want to have a top-level facility. And I think the ideas of looking at comparables in Germantown and Rockville are, is, you know, part of that conversation. So.
Mr., just a clarification, because I think what you meant, when you said remove it, not remove it and then don't count for what it was. Remove it, what are the standalone pieces? I know it's cheaper to do them both together, but if they're decoupled, you know, maybe it's 50 million, you know, but it's over a longer period, maybe it could be done.
It's true. I, I, I think, I think that's correct. It, for, if we are presented any other options, maybe there should be a with aquatic center, with aquatic piece or not with aquatic, you know, with or without. That's what I'm hearing. And I feel like we're, it's, it's a, you know, it's a direction. It's a real direction for the, the next part of this conversation. Tanisha, what do you think about this?
My question would be, do you have a timeline in mind on the next part of the conversation? Or do you want to revisit that at a later time?
I guess a question for you, or how long would it take you to put all this?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know, right? We need to determine how, how we pull that information together. Barry Dunn's completed their work.
I will say, I will just offer my observation on the aquatics piece is there clearly was a surprised demonstration of need. And what maybe isn't fully conveyed, conveyed in the report, I'd have to go make sure I reread what we've got in there. But there will need to be a decision made on the aquatic facility sooner than later because it does, it, it is getting older. It will need repair. It is not very large and it's not meeting the community needs right now. So with the decoupling, I understand if we, you just want to understand what is the pool cost? I, I can appreciate that. I would encourage the council to continue to consider what your options are then with providing aquatics to the general community. Because there will need to be a decision on that. Right, wrong, and different, how, whatever you, whatever you decide. There is a demonstrated need that, and right now focused during the middle of the day, seniors can't access that facility because school's in session. So just some things to think about with aquatics and my apologies if I'm overstepping. I know that's an outside of what we were, we were really tasked to do. But when we look at what are the unmet needs, this seems to be the biggest surprise for you.
That's a really, so just a clarify, it's very excellently put. I think in a comparability or optionality analysis, one thing that I would look at if I was putting something together is like, okay, you can build a standalone pool and that's $25 million. Or you can give every senior in the city Uber tickets and pay their membership to the Germantown Aquatic Center and that's a million dollars a year. So that's 25 years of funding, right? So not saying that's a good and seniors would like that over having their own, or we're having an aquatic center. But those are alternatives that have different price tags, different attributes. I want to make sure we explore the entire landscape.
Yeah. Uber tickets.
I just. Transportation? And Mr. Kennedy talked about transportation.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just having fun with that phrase, Uber tickets.
The box he thinks in is larger than most of ours.
Yes, yes. So Tanisha, do you want to digest the direction and then sort of maybe suggest how long it might take or what strategies we would take to, in order to continue this feasibility exercise?
I would appreciate some digestive time.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have anything further to add here?
I would just like to say, Danny, anytime a presentation generates this much discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
I do have a couple of answers to a couple of questions if you want us to go through a couple of those.
Sure.
Jean and Britta had a couple of questions. And one, they talked about the square footage that was allotted in the report. And the reason that it's only showing specifically that square footage, and we're not concerned about this, because we are also adding, you know, multipurpose rooms, fitness center, exercise, fitness and exercise spaces, instructional kitchen. So we know that they're limited by the space that they have now, but by coming into this larger facility, they'll have access to all of that additional space, the gymnasium, the walking track, all of that. So that, that is why it might look like we're only budgeting for those spaces, but we are not. We are budgeting for the larger space as well. And the, it does include the current BGC staff that is there. So all of that staff would be included. And the 2028, which I know, like, they're super excited. And the 2028, which I know, like, they're super excited about that, that was just that we had a starting point for the pricing. And if we look at the way that our budget cycle works, this would not even be necessarily potentially proposed as a CIP until this fall, which would be part of the FY27 budget. And so just when we did that, the fall of 28 was the earliest working through all of that, that if we had, you know, a huge windfall.
To be clear. Yes, yes. A proposal for FY27 would not be to build a center in FY27.
But they needed to have a place to start.
To save the funds.
Right. They, they needed to have a place to start to give us actual dollars and cents that we could then look at that five- and 10-year pro forma from. So that was not in any way saying we think this is going to open in the fall of 2028. Not in any way. Correct. So, yeah. So I just wanted to, to make sure.
No, I think we all got that.
As well.
Yeah, but I'm glad you made it clear to the public.
Yes. And then a couple of other things. So I know Mr. Kennedy was on the, on Zoom talking, and I just want to remind folks that also when they come to the Benjamin Gaither Center or whatever new facility we would have, the city does offer transportation to our seniors to come to our senior center. So that is not the ride on bus, and it's not, you know, any other type of public transportation. That is specifically set up with the staff, and they have a time that they get picked up and delivered right there and then returned home at the end of the day. So that is also something I just want to make sure that, that the public is aware of.
Can we offer that for the activity center as well, or is that?
We do not have that right now for the activity center, but I, I would surmise that in a new center that was a multi-generational center that our senior activities would specifically be housed in, that same transportation piece would be a part of that, because that is part of what we offer right now for our seniors. And we do offer that also for youth centers and, and things like that as well. But specifically, just speaking to that point, let's see. We were talking about, Rob said he was looking, wanted to know like kind of some capacity and location of other similar providers. And in the report, we do have a whole list of similar providers, what they provide and how close they are, or how, you know, what the distance is from the city limits to those other providers. And I do have information that I did put together based on the responses that I got from the different directors throughout the country, so I can share that with you as well, and the local community as well.
Also, private, private sector HOA providers as well, is what I.
Yeah, we don't have as much of like HOA. We do have private, like Lifetime Fitness and things like that. We do, that is included in that, in the report as well. Trying to think what else I wrote on here. Oh, just talking about the aquatics, and I know Danny mentioned it, but, you know, we can only, Monday through Friday, we can only access the pool from about four-thirty on until the evening. So that is really, you know, when we have that unmet need.
During the school year or?
Through the school year.
Yeah, so in the summer, you get it more, more time.
In the summer, no, we actually. Yeah, around, yeah.
Repeat that in the microphone.
Sorry. So I, I looked at my aquatics staff in the back also, Keegan, Kim. So during the summer, we do have a little bit more flexibility, and it opens, I believe, around noon. So we do, we do have a little bit more in the summer, but during the school year, you know, and we also have a lot of camp groups and things that also, you know, come and utilize the pool in the summer as well. And I'm trying to think if there were other things that I had a quick answer to, but obviously, we will, we will do a deeper dive on some of the other, some of the other questions and, and get that information.
Great. Thank you. And I, I will just say to both of you that even, you know, we're talking about decoupling, you know, about this aquatic center. I think one of the major revelations about this was, was the need for an aquatic center. And I think that's going to resonate, whether or not we, we end up doing it as part of this multi-generational center. I think the, the point was made about the need, and so that's very helpful for us.
Well, I think too, we probably didn't hear certain items as expressed needs directly from folks that might consider themselves seniors, because they might not know that that's an option. You know, do they know if we had space available in a pool during the day, they could do aqua fitness and aqua, aquatics for arthritis classes that are hugely popular and immensely helpful for their overall health? So if, if they weren't thinking about, oh, wow, if we had a gymnasium space that we actually could access during the day, I could play pickleball indoors, or I could walk indoors. Some of those things, generationally, younger generations are starting to expect these amenities out of community services, whereas older generations might not even realize and recognize, in some cases, not in everyone, that that is even an option on the table. But right now, I think they just want a little more space to move that stays dry. And I, I would encourage the city to think into the future a little bit about what else can we help this entire population enjoy together? I know the, the price tag's tough, but it's a.
Well, point well taken, and we appreciate it. And thank you for this great discussion, and thank you all for participating as well. Our next regular meeting is the nineteenth, it's a week from today, same time, same place, and you can participate in person or over Zoom as usual, and hope to see everybody at the Book Festival on Saturday. Praying for good weather. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.